All right, we'll bring our county council meeting for five thirteen twenty twenty four to order. First thing on the agenda is the treasurer.
The reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you about some CDs that are coming up and kind of get an idea of what you guys want to do about them as far as.
As far as they either increasing them, shortening the time span. Interest rates are kind of holding steady, not as good as we'd had earlier in the year, late last year, but still pretty decent, a lot better than we had a couple of years ago, that's for sure. But I've got the eleven forty-two Cume Jail CD that's coming up for two hundred thousand. And then I also, that one is coming up in this month, and then I have the Lit Economic Development Fund eleven twelve that's coming up for five hundred and eighty thousand. I normally do those each for six months. I don't know if you want to continue to do that, or if you want to increase them, or if you've got plans for the money. Kind of get a consensus.
Yes, you know, for myself, I have not had had anything come in front of me that is needing that money or whatever, so I would say we, I would think we leave it in, go ahead and leave it in for the next six months unless somebody else. I'll entertain a motion then to leave the money CDs for the next month?
I'd make a motion.
All right, we have a motion. Any further discussion? We have a second? Right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Ken, given how long my time will take, you may want to ask Mrs. Wagner to go ahead and speak first so she doesn't have to spend too much of her evening here with us.
If you're, if, if this Wagner's ready, we can go ahead and let her move forward and that way we're not holding you up for the rest of your evening. Yeah, one of the mics or whatever, because of the streaming, you can do the stand-up one if you prefer the sit-down.
All right, I'm here, Megan Wagner, representing the Community Foundation, and I believe someone's already spoken about this before, but the Indiana Communities Institute from Ball State University is going to hold a series of town discussions, one at each of the main towns of the county. They'll just facilitate the discussion. They want to hear from residents, what their pain points are, what they'd like to see for their communities in the future, what they'd like to see changed, and it's open to anyone. We'd certainly love to see representatives from the county council there too, so I'm just here letting you know or reminding you about that. When it's all complete, there'll be a report that comes back to, that's distributed to all the county officials, to the Community Foundation, and we'll have something to act on and discuss as a, as a group. So I have a flyer that has all the, all the events listed, so I'll pass that out and happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions? Sounds pretty simple and straightforward.
Thank you. Thank you, Nathan.
All right. You want, want to give Agwena time to go ahead and then we'll let you take off? Agwena, I'll say if you're ready, we'll, I don't think yours is going to take as long.
I'm just here to let you guys know. In the past, we've always used the Indiana Department of Health logo. So as a department, we are rebranding ourselves, okay, and we're excited to share with you guys our logo, and that's the front page. Okay, and it represents adults and children, as you'll see on the emblem, and then it circles all we do and offer in our department. So we offer public health, which is our nurse, environmental health, which is foods and septic and complaints, vital records, and then health education, which is our new health liaison, which we're blessed to have in our department. Okay, so this, eventually you'll be seeing this around, okay? So that's our new logo. The next page is just our department letterhead. It's got Dr. Days, you know, he's the health officer, and on the bottom it has, you know, who does what. Okay, and the next page is the grant that we received, okay? And I'd like just to give a big shout out and thank you to the Plaski County Community Foundation. I seen this grant came in an email, and it's through the state. And I was like, I can't do this myself. So I called Leanne, and she was on it. I asked her if she would collaborate and work with me and help me get this grant. And we were like BFFs for two weeks. I found out last week that we received the grant, should be coming mid-June, okay? And the grant total that we asked for was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents. They gave us an additional twenty thousand dollars for storage. Okay, and wonderful. Okay, and what we'll be able to do with this grant is go mobile, okay? And update the nurse's office. We don't even have an examination table, okay? We literally give shots on a chair, okay? So with this money, we'll be able to get a baby scale, we'll be able to get a a table, I mean, we'll be able to get billboards. I think we put in for like two billboards stating that, you know, that we got, that we are here to do shots. All the, everything to go mobile, okay? So vaccines for children since COVID hit, our scoreboard is like very, very high. People aren't getting their children vaccinated, okay? And starting this year, if your kid is not, don't have the proper vaccines, they can go to school for the first twenty days. After that, they will, they will not be. Okay, so with this, we'll be able to go to like kindergarten roundups and, you know, locally through the town and offer vaccines. Plus, you know, we can offer adult vaccines as well. But this grant is for for children, okay? So I'm really excited about that. And the next thing is Lindsay Weaver, she is our State Health Commissioner. She will be coming to Plaski County June seventh at ten AM. Okay, and we want, you know, we want everybody to be there. Indiana Department of Health wants to strengthen and foster the relationship between local health departments, discuss Health First Indiana, and meet community partners. We will be inviting all the local, all local elected officials and community partners to join us for this important meeting. Your input will be invaluable in shaping the future of public health in Plaski County. IDOH will reach out to state representatives and state senators, inviting them to participate as well. To facilitate this meeting, we are gonna, we have reserved the grappa room at Tippy's. This is a suitable meeting place and can accommodate a lot of attendees. IDOH, IDOH wants to celebrate everything we are doing to promote, protect, and improve health outcomes in Plaski County. We have a long way to go, but we are moving forward. Okay, so please put that on your calendar, okay? That's all I have.
Thank, thank you.
Yes. Yes, because now we'd be back scared. So if you're insured or uninsured.
And you can be, any child from any community can come, well, it's not us, that county residents.
And this back scare is huge for us, aren't it too, because we'll now be able to bill for private insurance. And we can make some money in that, so that's good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, Laura was requesting the copy of the grant documentation that was, that brought this, this funding in. You're up, sir.
Good evening, everybody. As you may recall, at our March meeting, I presented first drafts of documents relating to tax abatements, program guidelines, scoring rubric, and an application. This is work that was put in motion when the council last year passed the ordinance to establish the Economic Development Commission with the language saying that going forward, now that there is an EDC in place, the council would adopt some formal parameters for considering tax abatement requests. Started it in January, once the EDC, we finally got a meeting scheduled and been working on that. Since the presentation of those first drafts, I have solicited input from the council, the auditor and assessor Van Der A, and the EDC has continued working. And now I have before you updated versions of these documents, as well as an adopting ordinance in case the council feels prepared to implement the new policy tonight. So we'll start, I've, I've got them all numbered in the corners, A's, B's, C's, E's. A1 is just a selection from the Indiana Code, specifically IC six one dot one, twelve dot one, three subsection B, which contains the language establishing the findings the council is expected to use to make determinations regarding ERA designations and abatements, project value, employment estimates, estimated annual salaries, the average, that is, other benefits that may be of interest to the council, and whether or not the totality of benefits, if all of these things add up, is sufficient for the council to approve justifying the request. The application guidelines and scoring rubric are all ultimately structured to reflect the subsection. So moving on to B1 quickly, because very little has changed on this page, it's just introduction to the programs and instructions and guidelines for applicants. Discusses warnings about speculative development, development inside of TIF districts, and the county's two thousand twenty-one Quabax Resolution. The only thing on this page that I think is really necessary to revisit is that whether now or next month, when the council passes the ordinance and puts this all in motion, you need to establish an application fee. For now, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed. If you want to go higher, I was going to recommend two hundred dollars, because that covers about half of the cost of an EDC meeting, presuming that there will be other business necessary at those meetings. If you want to go higher, I'm up for that, I don't really care. But that's the only thing, whether you want to discuss it now or once we get through everything else, that is on this page that requires some input from the council, I think, because it's all just, like I said, guidelines, instructions for applicants, and introduction to the program. Moving on to B2, as well as pages D1 and D2, we have made some recommendation, recommended changes to how scores are assessed. And if you look at the page D1 and 2, the legal-sized pages can follow along a little more easily than following through the text. First category, scoring is new investment, which is worth forty total points. And initially, we just had a general project investment scoring category. But the EDC and I revisited this, and given that all personal property is subject to one of, a handful of predetermined depreciation pools, meaning that by the time the abatement is let up, there's a lot less value to be taxed than when the equipment is installed. Whereas as long as the properties remain in use and are well-maintained, unless the entire real estate market drops, we can usually expect that the value of the buildings will remain relatively stable. They may see a little bit of drop as they age, but they're not subject to firmly established depreciation schedule. And so EDC felt that it was appropriate to weigh the real property investment more strongly than the personal property investment. So you will now see that real property is still on a forty-point scale. The tiers have increased from fifty thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars, and each seventy-five thousand dollar tier is worth one point. Any investment over three million dollars, the cap is just worth three quarters of a point. And then the personal property, instead of being valued at a point the same as the real, is now two-thirds of a point. We were going, originally looking at a slightly larger gap between the two, but the math got really messy in terms of how much the max investment would be, and it was just unrealistic for virtually any project Plaski County has ever seen. So the personal property is capped also at forty points, four point five million. And if a project comes in requesting abatement on both, then those two scores would be averaged to find the total out of forty for the investment component of the abatement score. Then on page D2, you have the employment-related categories, your average project wage, wage, your jobs created, and your jobs retained. This side is worth sixty points compared to forty, because we thought ultimately while adding new tax role, new taxable value to the tax rolls is important, because personal property depreciates, and you can't be certain that the real property won't in some way do. Whereas jobs mean new wages, new income taxes potentially, depending on the project and the wages, the possibility of encouraging new residential growth. The EDC capped this weighted more heavily in total. The average wage, one point five points for every five percent tier of the minimum wage, starting at two hundred and fifty-five percent of the minimum wage, rounded upward or downward from two point five percent intermediaries. And that two, that two hundred and fifty-five percent right now is equal to eighteen forty-nine per hour. So if a project isn't paying on average eighteen forty-nine an hour, it's not going to get any points. Now, that might be a couple of fifteen, sixteen-dollar job starter, but we're going to assume that maybe some mid-management as well, some skilled labor. So I guess that is going to be, as is on the SB one forms, all of the new jobs created averaged out. And then that caps at four hundred and fifty percent of the minimum wage, thirty-two sixty-three for sixty points, with bonus if they go above that. Jobs created.
So on this, on this here, it's, it's an average project wage.
Yeah, so if there are.
The low and the higher, it's taking all the wages.
So if the job says they're going to create ten people, ten positions, and there's going to be a five hundred thousand dollar total expected salary, we're going to find the average is fifty. So that's, and that's, that's keeping in mind with how it's structured on the SB one. So then category two B is your jobs created and retained, again, forty point, forty job cap for a sixty-point maximum, one and a half points per job. We had gone back and forth on whether wages or jobs should be weighed more heavily. We know that Plaski County still struggles sometimes with workforce, and so we have employers have a lot of trouble maintaining or attracting enough workforce. So at one point, we were fearing more towards weighing the wages more heavily. But we consulted with the assessor, she felt that the job should be given more weight, we came back to the middle, hoping that if we have, obviously, these, these points all get averaged, so we're not going to give too much weight to either one, but we'll hope that we are rewarding a project that is creating a lot of jobs. And maybe with the things going on with my office and the Community Foundation and other partners on the housing, childcare, broadband fronts, it might make it a little likelier that some of the people who would otherwise be commuting for those positions might be more inclined to relocate to Plaski County. See, so we ended up keeping those at equal one and a half points for both jobs and salaries. The application does require that they explain, they justify how a project is retaining jobs. They can't just say, oh, we got fifty people, we're putting this in, we're going to keep those fifty people. They'll need to say that, for instance, if we don't put this new machine in, we aren't going to be able to compete with China, and so we're going to have to lay off thirty people. They're, they're going to be able to need to provide evidence, whereas in the past, we've just sort of taken their word at their retention, and some people, I think, have sort of unthinkingly just said, oh, we have six, like I said, fifty people, we're retaining fifty people. So those will all get weighed in, get averaged in, so that at the end of the day, average project wage plus jobs created and retained are worth sixty points. Project investment is worth forty points. And then with the potential for bonus, if they exceed any of those caps, the maximum out of one hundred that a project could get is just shy of a hundred and two points. Same general structure as what I presented in March, but like I said, we made a little bit of a tweak to the the jobs and wages on how those are scored and where the baseline is for the wage. And we weighed real property a little more heavily than personal property. You have any questions on these basic scoring points and how they align with what I just read to you in the Indiana Code about the consideration of investment, jobs, and wages?
Any questions, Mr. Auger, on this?
All right, then moving on, past the scoring, we'll get to pages B3 and D1, the first of those two legal sheets. As I had presented last month, two months ago, we did include some opportunities for both bonus points and for deductions. Deductions if they're going to require the Winnamette Water and Street Department or County Highway to make certain improvements, the RMC to make some improvements, that sort of thing. If there is a very obvious and concerning risk for environmental impact on the project, and then bonus points for alignment with the strategic plan, reuse of lighted property, that sort of thing, use of local materials and construction labor. Nothing has changed with these, but it's important that I note that I did speak with Assessor Van Der A and Steve McKinney of the DLGF about this stuff specifically, and they had some concerns about how both the process and the subjectivity, especially if we were to come back and say, oh, well, Jimmy Joe said he was going to buy all of his materials from Healy's and Ace, and all we saw were trucks coming from Menards, and we gave him bonus points, it's very difficult to take those points away and restructure the, the deduction given, you know, maybe it was an eight, he earned an eight-year, and now it should be a seven-year because he lost points. I did convey those to the EDC, and they felt that they would like to keep these in here as is and hope that any enforcement we can manage on a case-by-case basis, even if we know there is going to be some difficulty in enforcement, just so that we are putting on paper that we are encouraging these projects to be developed using local materials and/or labor whenever possible. We almost removed that, that one specifically, they decided they wanted to keep it in. Obviously, the council has the final say in this. I very much appreciate where Stephen Holly are coming from, I also appreciate what the EDC wants to do by trying to encourage as much local economic engagement as possible. So I'm going to defer to the council as to whether you want to strip that or keep it, and hope that as we enforce it, we're able to come to a very, a fairly clear process for doing it on a case-by-case basis.
Does anybody have any thought on that right now, or, I, I'll kind of jump ahead. With our abatement classes coming up, I think, unless there's somebody else that feels differently, I think it'd be very prudent to wait until, to pass any of this until after our abatement classes is done. Which, correct, Michelle, because you know the date maybe a little better than I do. June fourth? I think it's eleven, yeah, okay, well, it's, it, yeah, the classes are June eleventh, I believe they're one thirty to three o'clock. One to four, okay. My, yeah, so anyhow, June eleventh.
June fourth from one to four here.
There's more, I seen one that said June eleventh, that's what I wrote down on the paper here, but anyhow, okay, stand corrected, it's June fourth, one to four, and all, and I would encourage everybody on this board to be at that class.
And it will be given by Mr. McKinney, whom I just mentioned, yeah.
So anyhow, I.
I don't know if it's necessary to delay till after that, but there's certainly no harm, and at least if you council members attend, that'll give you a week after that meeting to follow up on any of these points where there may still be questions before the June meeting.
And abatement? Oh, yeah. Anyhow, like I said, I would, I would urge all the council members to be at that training. Once again, it is June fourth from one to four here at the County Highway. And then on our meeting on the tenth, we'll have the review of the abatements stuff. Our present. So. Excuse me for interrupting you, Mr. Auger, I'll let you.
No, no problem.
Back into yours, I just want to kind of get that pointed out and all like.
That is, okay, Ken. But yeah, that, keep that in mind, please, and I'll send out a reminder prior to the June meeting, but if we're going to probably delay adoption until that meeting, I will make, I would like to make sure that we have conversation, any questions any you may have. But like I said, EDC has a reason for keeping it in there, but Holly and DLGF do have concerns about the enforcement. I covered what the nature of those, the maximum bonus points in, would, in, under that section twenty-five, up to thirty-five deduction points, which theoretically would make a, a normal ten-year project like a five-year project at that point, if not worse. And I did want to note in addressing those that. And I did want to note in addressing those that beyond the base score and these potential bonus points and deductions, there's language in here that does give the council or the EDC a little bit of leeway. So if, if the score comes out and says it should be a nine-year abatement, but there is, there are other criteria that aren't easily addressed in the scoring that say, you know, we think this is a really good project we want to make happen. As long as you put the justification in writing, you've got some leeway to go above or below the recommended schedule. Uh, if, if something doesn't feel right. Back to pages B four and B five. This is the, the actual phase in schedule. After a lot of back and forth on this proposed schedule, the EDC ultimately decided to leave it as I had presented it to you last, or in March. Formally establishes the 190, 80, 70, et cetera, phase in as the quote unquote standard baseline for tax abatement requests. And then assign application score ranges to various deduction schedules. An application score of less than seven qualifying for no abatement, 7.01 to 14 for a one-year abatement. And the rest of the scale up to 77 points qualifying project for a two to 10-year range like that. Um, above 77 points, a project might qualify for a second, third, fourth, et cetera, a year with a 100% deduction with the rest of the 10-year schedule adjusted accordingly. Up to nine years with 100% abatement for what we'll call a super unicorn project that scores all 101 point, uh, 755 base points, all 25 bonus points and no deductions. Um, based on historic projects, I think we're actually going to find most requests aren't even going to hit that 10-year mark. Um, that was where, some of the concern with this schedule as proposed was, are we going to start seeing projects that get five years of 100% tax abatement? But once we actually went back into the record and saw where most projects landed, we saw that most of these would be lucky to score above a 45 or 50. Um, so once we were able to see that, the EDC didn't think there was any reason to amend this schedule. We felt that 70 points, based on what it takes to get 70 points, was a pretty reasonable expectation to get to that 100. And few and far between will be the projects that start seeing multiple 100-year abatement schedules. Um, so that's all of that on the scoring rubric and the rules. Any questions on any of that before we go into the application, starting on page C one?
Further questions?
Okay. Application introduction, page C one. A lot of repetitious information from the front page of the rules, just giving instructions, guidelines, basic information to applicants as well as signature page where they will assent to agreeing that all the information in the following pages is accurate. They understand the rules, they understand the council has some flexibility, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, page C, pages C two through the top of C six, five. Nothing really here has changed from March. And it's basic information on the, what they're requesting, who the applicant is, where the property is, um, contact information for the owner or owners or agents, how the property is used. Current assessed value of land and improvements and personal property, property taxes paid, and then description of the project itself, what they're actually asking to get an abatement on. And then finally, project timeline and zoning, stuff like that. So that's all basic information. Um, that with the exception of the questions on the costs really aren't about the scoring. Just give relevant information about the project scope for the council. Starting on page six and going through page seven are where we start digging into the criteria outlined in the Indiana code there beyond the cost. Um, question about the need for incentives. So why do you need this tax abatement? Whether it's, you know, and whatever reason that may be. That's where they're going to have to say, yeah, we're making it an investment. Here is why you should justify incentive, providing incentive. Uh, then they're going to get the questions about the new jobs, wages, to the best of their ability estimating how many of those new jobs would be held by local residents. That's going to be a little bit subjective, hard for you really to score on that, but good information to understand. Same question with jobs retained. And then page seven on 12B is that question, asking them to explain why the jobs are going to be retained by this project. So that, again, they're not just saying, well, we have jobs. We're going to keep these people. We're going to have, keep them because we need to be able to increase our production by 47% and we can't do this without this machine. Otherwise, everyone's getting laid off. Question 13, undesirability for normal development. That is for only when they are requesting an ERA designation, won't be applicable. One's already in place, but it's the fairly broad terminology and definitions in the Indiana code saying why the project property even qualifies to be tax abatement eligible, let alone the, the specific project. Pages C eight through C 10, these get into the bonus questions and the sort of, um, intangibles. Does it align with our strategic plan? Does it, uh, use lighted or underutilized property? Are there facilities, uh, public facilities that will be affected? Water, sewer, street, electric, gas, any environmental impacts? Any downstream benefits that aren't really captured with any of the other answer? Uh, so this, this project is going to bring new life to downtown because we're putting it in a rehabilitated downtown building. And so Tippies and Jacks and Cruisers are all going to see an influx in lunchtime customers, something like that. Then page, the last question, it's about project cash flow. That's another one of those that it doesn't directly answer any of the questions. But if they're going to tell you that this project is going to cash flow positive from day one, it might affect whether or not you actually give them the abatement schedule they have earned or take it down a couple of years because it's less obvious that they need it. Any questions or concerns about all of these application questions?
Any questions, Mr. Orger on the application? I do have, uh, one myself.
Yeah.
Maybe to try to clarify for people. This is for the initial process for somebody applying for an abatement. This is not anything that is looking at the abatement in the future. If they've already got an abatement, it's not a, a new scoring plan that will be used every year to, uh, qualify if an abatement is.
Correct, that's, and that gets back to part of that conversation I had with Stephen Holly about what you can and can't do and what you can do easily and not so easily with your annual compliance. As I understand it, and we can have the conversation with Holly, and I'm sure Steve McKinney will go, your annual compliance check is basically making sure that they are keeping the promises they have kept. So do they create the 12 jobs they said they're going to? If so, good. If not, why? If they don't, if they haven't for whatever reason, it's not an automatic non-compliance. They may come with you and say, well, you know, the entire economy just collapsed over COVID or something, but they have to be able to justify why they didn't. Likewise, you said you were going to pay $34 an hour on average. These people are on average 22 bucks an hour. Why is that? We are, we are taking away your compliance for this year. If you get those wages up for next year, we might approve it for that year. But that, this is all the initial score that sets that deduction schedule where it's a, whether it's a 10-year standard or a 190, 80, 70, 60, done. That, that's what all this is. Like I said, those bonus points, I'm sorry, those deductions or loss of bonus points if they don't keep, make the promises they keep. It gets a little, it could get a little messy, but that is mostly going to come in like right at the beginning. If they say that they're not going to create any problems for County Highway and then Mr. Kruger tells us that they just destroyed a culvert, you might say, well, your 72-point abatement is now worth 67 points. We have to strip that. And that, that is where it might get messy with sort of immediate compliance. Um, but yeah, as far as annual compliance, that is primarily focused on whether or not they've kept the long-term promises. The number of jobs, the amount of investment. And if, if they don't meet the amount of investment, they're not getting an abatement on as much value, any taxable value anyway, because they don't have as much. But you were expecting that much eventually to go in the tax rolls. And so you might find them non-compliant because they only installed half of the machinery they said they were going to. So you might take away the abatement on the half they did.
Any other questions on this application process?
All right, then I will hope that if you have any questions, comments, thoughts between now and then, please shoot them to me and hope as many of you as possible are able to attend Mr. McKinney's session on the 4th of June. Try to get this buttoned up at, on the 10th of June.
Yeah, I would, uh, I'll say we'll need to be prepared for the 10th of June to have a fee rate set for that, uh, for the application process.
And I will see if I can get some intel from other cities, towns and counties on what their fee schedules are. Because we've never had an app, any of this. We don't have to charge a fee at all. It's just now that we have an EDC and they are charged with making a recommendation to the council, which means that we're going to have to pay them to show up to a meeting. I thought that might be an opportune justification for charging at least, if not even their entire, um, pay for a meeting, at least covering part of the cost. Just like that's part of how the BZA and Plan Commission fee schedules are set up to make sure that county is recouping some of the costs for those meetings.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I mean, most, most of these processes that we're doing now, we've adopted some core fee schedule for them to, you know, try and take the burden off the taxpayer from paying for somebody that's requesting something special from the, from local government. All right. We're moving on here. Um, we have some, uh, transfers. Superior Court, 1,500 from contracted services to envelope CDC, 90,000 from economic development to professional services, uh, 85,000 and marketing 5,000 of that 95 or 90,000. Treasurer is $87 from office equipment to tax statement, PRC, SG and print. Uh, we have the additionals that need to be advertised. Airport, airport improvement buildings, 164,575.69. Airport improvement, uh, uh, connection and buildings, 17,795. Uh, we have some additionals that, um, uh, were, uh, approved and have been advertised, the, well, step back. The EMS, the 34,302.93 that was approved last month has not been advertised yet. So it'll go on to anything that's being advertised uh, for this next meeting. Uh, the additionals that have been advertised that are up for approval are Superior Court, 16,065 examination of prisoners, human building, human building, plus Memorial Hospital project, 50,700. And highway motor vehicles, 31,801, professional services for 400,000. I'll entertain a motion or any discussion. And then we can entertain a motion to pass all as presented or separate them out.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers.
All right, we have a motion to approve transfers.
And approve the additional from the, I don't know, I think the airport guy is here. So I just, I'd like to hear from him.
Okay.
When he sticks it.
Okay, we can, so.
I just, on the, uh, professional services, 85,000, what, what was that?
Yeah, that is. So the Economic Development Fund, for a little background, when you approved that, the budget for this year, we put a lot of money in that. Because at the time, Alaska County was going to be the sub-recipient of a state grant through the Northwest Indiana Forum that is paid on a reimbursement basis. And so I was going to cover those bills and then state would reimburse. Uh, because of some of the consultants we're working with, the, we had to change that over to Jasper County's Economic Development Office. So there's a lot of extra money in there. So that's why we, all right, I'm taking so much money from a fund that has so much in it. Uh, the professional services is mostly because we had one last architect bill that needed to get paid before the bond proceeds had been received. Lumenade is actually going to hold off on the April bill until the bonds have been proceeded, uh, proceeds had been received. But they are expecting payment for the now 30 days past due, um, bill for February, or for March, I'm sorry. So we needed to get that covered. And so that most, a large part of that will be reimbursed as part of the bond process. But it was easier to transfer it than to do yet another additional.
That your question, Tim? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the transfers and the already advertised additionals. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Pass it. All right, um, step up, uh, Jeff had a couple of questions about your, uh, airport, uh.
I'd like to answer questions like him.
All right. That's the most we can ask at this point in time. What are your questions, Jeff?
Oh, I, I, okay. I can get the good idea as well. Um, the current airport improvement program project going on right now is the reconstruction of the oldest and first building of Aaron's Field, which is the long key hanger, open hanger out there. It's been, uh, was, uh, constructed in 1969 and nothing's been done to it since. So the BOAC has decided then to using BIL, by person, infrastructural law funding, seed with that, which has been already awarded, tree big. And the, uh, grant is coming for that, which is our 2023 and 22 bill funding rolled over is in process now. We have not received that funding yet, but it has been, it has been approved and it's coming to us. The full, the full amount of the project is much more than the 244,444 that was called in that, those two years of bill funding. Because the BOAC wanted to go further with the project and just putting new doors on the building. They want to put concrete floors in, partitions, new concrete entries into each stall and the, and the hanger doors, which bring the building up to a much better facility, which the airport facility is getting much better, actually. Um, the situation is though, since Tree Big's already been awarded the contract, in order for us to enable that contract and that funding is not getting gotten to us as of yet, been approved, but not to us yet, we have to front money to them to start that, to start that contract going. So we need to have the money to front for that. And then in 2024, bill funding will reimburse us then in 2025 for the amount of 125,56. So the need for the money is actually to, to get that contract going, start that process moving in the timeframe allowed within the contract we have.
And this is funding that you have in these, uh, in their performance funds, or this is funding that you're waiting to receive?
Well, we have, we have, uh, two years of bill funding we are, it was received now. And then the 2024, uh, uh, bill funding will come to us then, obviously, in the following year, in 2025. But there will be some of our money that is involved in the project as well.
So how much is the, how much grant money are you bidding and how much money is in town? What's the difference?
I don't have the full amount of what the project was completely. I think it's like 410,000 for the complete project. 370,000 is amount of, of the BIL funding coming to us out of those three years of funding.
Where the extra funding that, you know, between the three hundred and seventy five and the four hundred and some thousand, where's that funding coming from then?
Our improvement, our airport improvement fund, which has been waiting patiently for us to do something with. No, it's all coming out of that fund. And then when that money comes in, twenty twenty five for that bill funding, that will go back into. Right, it'll come back to us.
So, in your airport improvement fund, that'll have a total what the total was in that, in that fund?
Well, those figures you have right there. Total's in it.
A hundred and sixty four thousand. So, you're, you're depleting the funds then? You're depleting?
At, at the moment, yes. And then when we have, we, we don't need it all, it'll all go back into that fund, not going to deplete completely. Correct. We have to, we have to put money upfront to begin this contract first.
So, you're running, you're using this money here that you're, that you have in your fund now?
To execute the contract.
To execute the contract to get the, say, the work started.
Correct.
Forward, and then the expectation was is when the, wherever you get the money from the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and the twenty twenty four comes back, that will replenish.
It's a reimbursement.
So, you don't, you'll be able to go for a period of time without any funds in that airport improvement.
Correct.
Fun. Right, 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 I, just, you know, I, it just always makes me a little nervous whenever they say they're going to, you know, spend everything that's in a fund and then something else happens and they need some funds and there's, you know, nothing there to, to cover it, you know?
Yeah, and then the whole amount that they were asking for at this point is not, it's going, going out, that full amount's not going to be going out. We don't have the exact amount we need yet, it's going to be somewhere under that figure actually.
Okay.
So, it won't be depleted completely. Still going to be there, we're going to put money back in.
So, you have, you have quotes or bids and stuff on this work and all?
Yes, already been, already been awarded. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the.
Yeah, they're kind, they're, they're a little, little bit slow. They're a little bit slow, and then leasing the funds out to it. Be coming to us some point, all right.
Other questions? Furs?
They're the ones that made the.
Do we, no further discussion? We have a motion or do we want to get more information, understand this better before we move forward? Looking around the table, I kind of read that there's some questions on people's minds that maybe they want answered and maybe make sure that the auditors comfortable with how we're going to move the money. Is that a motion? Is that a motion? All right, we got a motion, we got a motion. We have a motion and a second, although, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
So, it's, either, either myself or Jeremy will get it together on a piece of paper, it shows it all in timeline, but the amount of the street big contract, the timeframe of each piece, why that money had to come up at this point, start to execute the contract, you know, have we look at it that way.
Yeah, then if you could spend some time with Laura to verify that the way we're, the, the grant money that's coming to be moved and put in place, so we don't create problems for the future auditor. But, but we can, yeah, we can get together, solve that out, and then have it, have it ready for, we can answer these questions for our next hopefully approve it or go forward.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we got the minutes for the four, eight, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes here that need to be approved. Motion or? All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Passes. We have a appointment for the Monterey Library Board. The appointment is Nancy Widener, who is replacing Mrs. Rodriguez, Rodriguez, presented by the President of the Fusco County or the Monterey Library Board. Have a motion to approve the nomination? All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, just kind of a, a reminder, because we're getting close to that time. Budget hearings and stuff will be August twelfth and thirteenth. Public hearing will be September ninth, final adoption will be October fourteenth. Something else, S and P did affirm the county's existing double A negative rating, which is very good for us, so it tells us that we've been heading in the right direction fiscally, and I hope to see us continue to move that way and get even a better rating if we ever needed it in the future. Any public comment? Yes, sir. Yeah. No, I don't think.
Their, S and P is aware of the possibility, but that is not guaranteed.
Yeah, that, it, yeah, they look at our fiscal, our fiscal standing as of today, not what could be in the future or what might possibly be. Any other comment? Any board comments? All right. I would agree, I mean, I, I know, we've done in the past where you tell everybody to put ten percent in. I personally think, you know, in my history of working with wages and stuff, cost of living is not a ten percent raise, that is a wage adjustment, which we just went through a wage adjustment. Cost of living is to, do our best to keep up with the increasing cost of things, environment, which, yes, it was eight point some percent, but we're probably not going to be able to go to that route, so I agree with five percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? All right, our, everybody remember paperwork to be signed. The next Commissioners Meeting is Monday, five twenty, twenty twenty four at eight thirty. Next council meeting is Monday, six ten, twenty twenty four at seven PM, and the next joint section is six ten, twenty twenty four at six PM. Thank you all, our meeting is adjourned.